Everybody, we are going to commence with a regular session of the East Hampton School Committee meeting. We will be moving into executive session at the end of this regular session and then adjourning the meeting from that executive session. We're going to roll call in. Mayor?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Sam will be with us shortly. Megan?
Here.
And Laura Scott President. We're going to begin with announcements and correspondence.
I have no correspondence to report.
Okay. And we can open the floor for public comment. If there's anyone in the room or joining us via Google meets, if you'd like to raise your hand in person or virtually, I'll call on you one at a time. All right, Dreah, bear with me while I... Go ahead, Dreah. Can you unmute yourself? Yes.
Yes. Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, school committee members, superintendent, and Mayor LaChapelle. I'm speaking about concerns regarding recent changes at our school, particularly the use of specials for computer-based math instruction and the general lack of proactive communication from the school administration regarding curriculum and schedule changes. I speak for myself and many parents who feel that we have been left out of the loop on these important matters. For instance, we only learned indirectly about the introduction of a spatial-temporal math game during specials after the fact rather than through direct communication from the administration. Unfortunately, this lack of communication from administration is not a new issue. The irony of receiving a newsletter titled "In the Loop" is not lost on us. We have a dedicated and engaged parent body that deeply cares about the quality of education our children receive. After all, this is a public school, and transparency and collaboration with parents are vital. When information is lacking, it makes it difficult for parents to engage constructively. This is not a criticism of our teachers, who do a wonderful job, but rather a concern about the administrative communication channels. Despite the creation of a position specifically to address parent communication, it appears that little has changed. Parents are left to piece together information about their child's education from conversations with their children and amongst themselves, which is far from ideal. If the administration is concerned about parents discussing school changes on social media, then they need to take a more proactive and thorough approach to communication. I believe that open and proactive communication would foster a more positive relationship between the school and the parent community. We have received three newsletters thus far, yet none have addressed the introduction of the ST Math program or anticipated changes in the middle school schedule. Instead, they have focused on disciplinary procedures, buses, lunches, and cell phones. While these are important topics, they should not overshadow the need for clear communication about curriculum changes and other educational matters that directly impact our children. I hope this message is received in the spirit of collaboration and with the shared goal of providing the best possible education for our students. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Dreah. Is there anyone else joining us who would like an opportunity to speak this evening? We're going to give it just a minute. Okay. Seeing nothing, we are going to close public comment for this evening and move to the superintendent update.
We, um, sorry, I'm so sorry that I'm late.
It's okay, it's okay.
Do we already do gifts? Like, did I have one to report?
We'll circle back to that at the end of the superintendent update. Thank you, Sam.
Hey, good evening to everybody. We had a smooth back-to-school opening this year. We had teacher training two days, and we had a guest speaker, two guest speakers, one that trained our staff on the new Title IX provisions that are a big change from past Title IX. So it was very important that we got staff trained, and we actually had them trained by one of our lawyers who specializes in Title IX. We also had a guest speaker by the name of Murco, and he is a person of color who grew up in the Boston area, and he shared his story about growing up and the importance of equity in school. And he is a big supporter of equity and our work in that area, so he's going to continue to work. Also, we're going to focus a little more on the middle school this year because that's an area that perhaps we haven't focused on so much in the past, so we want to really focus on the middle school and some of the work that's going on there, actually especially in the area of math. So ST Math was introduced to the community. I brought it up at a school committee meeting about us receiving the grant and what that was about. So ST Math is a program that's used in a lot of districts across the state. It is supported also by DESI. It's on QRA. It has shown absolutely amazing results in bringing up math scores. So students in the middle school have to use it 90 minutes a week. The cost of that program is usually about $30,000 a school. We were very fortunate to be awarded a grant, so we do not have to pay that cost. So concern for me, I really have to tell you, are the math scores in the middle school. Very concerned that out of 117 kids, only 17 qualify to take Algebra I in grade eight. So we moved ST Math in. Program is very specific to address the needs of our students, and it has national records of bringing up math scores. So we did begin ST Math in both K through 8. They don't have a 9-12 program. And we are really looking forward to see the increase in math scores that are really needed, especially in the middle school. We also introduced a new cellphone policy that we discussed at a previous, our first meeting when we were talking about the handbooks. And we do have Principal Evans here tonight, and I'd like him to be able to give an update to the public regarding how that cellphone policy change is going.
Good evening, folks. I did email you some, yes, to the school committee email address some data for you to look at that I'll go over right now. So overall, just things are going really well in terms of the cellphone policy, in terms of our target of having students not use cell phones in class during lessons. So two pieces of data that I can share with you. Yesterday, we sent out a survey to our staff with a number of questions, asking them basically how things are going. So the first question is, overall, how is the new procedure working in your class? And the choices were excellent, very good, okay, and poor. And excellent got 23%, and very good got 71%, with a couple of outliers, one or two responses, one okay and one sort of an other kind of response. But so between excellent and very good, you basically got almost all of the responses. About what percentage of students are regularly pouching or giving their phones to you to store in their desk, in your desk? So the context of that question is, students, when they're coming into the classroom, are asked to put their phone in our little pouches. But they have always, they have been given the option of storing their phone in a locker or at the main office. So the question is, are they coming in and putting their phone in the pouch, or are they saying it's somewhere else? So about 42% of the staff, 13 responded that 80 to 100% of the students are putting their phones in the pouch when they come into their classroom, and about 36%, 11 said that 60 to 80% of the students are doing that. So that's about 42, 30, like, 78, almost 80% are saying that between 60 and 80 and 100% of the students are putting the phones in the pouch. So the other 40% are basically saying students are walking in and they're not putting their phone in the pouch, but their phones are not coming out during the lesson. So my belief is that students are saying that it's somewhere else, and this may come as a shock, but sometimes students don't always tell the truth to adults in schools. So they're basically saying, I don't have it, and then it doesn't appear during the lesson, so we're not searching them and demanding that they prove that. We're taking them at their word, and if we don't see it, no harm done. The next question is, do you provide regular phone breaks? And we just wanted this information to see if there was a correlation between more phone use and whether or not a phone break mattered. Turns out, about 2/3 of our staff are not providing regular breaks during the class, and about 1/3 are. Not sure if that is relevant, given that virtually nobody is reporting phone use in classes. The last question, and we asked in the survey, is based on your experience, where should we focus our collective attention with regard to phone use? Choices were getting students to put phones in the pouches, getting students to take earbuds out, because that was a question that we are addressing also, phone use in the hallways, and appropriate use of Chromebooks. So about 1/3, a little over 1/3, said getting students to put phones in pouches, and about 1/3 said phone use in hallways or bathrooms. And then the other two choices were split between Chromebooks and earbuds, which were pretty minimal. So the issue that, the second issue of students using the phone in the hallway. So at the end of class, students can take their phone and go to the next class and use their phone when they're passing from one class to the other. But if they're in class and they want to go to the bathroom, or to the nurse, or down to the office, or to the counseling office, they're supposed to leave the phone in the pouch and not take the phone into the hallway. And the reason for that is pretty simple. You go into the bathroom, and there's, you know, several students hanging out with their phones. So they're not, they're missing too much class time. That's been our experience. So we told them that they can't. So the second piece of data, and I'm going to come back to this question in a minute, is that we sent out, we sent out a form that teachers can use if they see a student using the phone in the hallway. And if they don't know that student, it may or may not be wise to approach that student and say, hey, your phone needs to go back into the pouch. Without a relationship, student may or may not respond well to that. So we don't want to escalate, but we do want to report. So we provided a handwritten and electronic form for staff to use. And so in our, what, three, six, seven, eight days of school so far, we've had 16 reports of students using the phones in hallways, bathrooms, so on and so forth. Of those 16 reports, that's 13 individual students, so there's a few students that are repeat users of phones in the hallway. So when we go back to that question, phone use in the hallway is one of the more important concerns. So what we're seeing is most students are coming in and putting the phones in the pouches and leaving them alone for the rest of the class. Some students are not doing that. They're keeping their phone in their bag or their pocket or somewhere, but they're not taking them out in class, but then when they go on a break, they may come out. So we do want to start focusing in on that area a little bit and cleaning that up a little bit. The main point, and there's a comment section, and I'm not sharing the comments with you because I didn't ask student staff if that was okay with them, so I don't want to share their comments, but the main thrust of the comments were, we're not seeing phones in classrooms. I'm not dealing with phones in the classroom. So primary objective so far has been, has certainly been met. Reducing phone use altogether is still being met. Keeping it sort of out of the culture of the school, I think, or keeping it out of the bathrooms and the hallways and that kind of thing is the next area that we probably should focus on. But I would say overall, overall, things are going really well, and staff, I think, are very pleased. Last thing I want to just say before, if you have any questions, is that the next thing that we will be doing is starting to ask students regularly how this is impacting them, if they feel like this is helping them, or if they notice a difference for themselves. And the quote of the week was a teacher saying to me, it was the end of class, we were done with the lesson, there was a couple minutes left, but I weren't, I wasn't letting them get their phones, and there was all this noise. I couldn't understand why it was so loud, and then I realized they were talking to each other. I thought that was pretty funny. So if anybody has any questions?
Anyone?
You have that data in your email if you want to peruse it.
I just appreciate you reporting, reporting back so soon.
Those mics need to be on.
Oh. I just wanted to say, I appreciate you for reporting back with data so soon. I feel like we just went back to school, and that was a lot of information.
Well, Maureen texted me over the weekend and said, hey, the school committee would like to know how it's going. The survey for staff, I had a staff meeting yesterday, it was easy enough to get out there, but...
That's awesome. That's really good.
Can't wait to hear the students' thing.
Yeah, I was just going to say, my feeling is that, from having older cousins, that they, they do want this to be the case. They just need to understand what it feels like and then realize, oh yeah, it is nice to talk to my friends, but if they have the option, they're going to look at their phones just like I do the same thing. I mean, if I put it away, then it forces me to go, what's going on? So they'll, they'll appreciate it, I think, over the long term also.
Yeah.
They just need to see what it feels like first.
I think I would agree. As I said to them in all my, I think I mentioned this to you all last time we met, in our first day class meetings, I said to each group, I said, I know you know in your hearts that this is the right thing to do. And I think the general feeling was, yeah, you're right, Mr. Evans. But, you know, again, we'll ask and see how they're, how they're feeling about it.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention also that there's a lot of social media work being done at the high school, too, where they're trying to post and get the information out almost on a daily basis. And now also at the, do you want to say anything about that first?
Where should I go now?
About, about all the messages that you're getting out about the good things that are happening to families and kids and posting, and there's a big effort for, to get the information out.
Yeah, so I can talk about that just a little bit. So I'm sure you're all astute followers of our Facebook page, but if you're not, daily announcements get posted, and they also get posted on our website at the high school. And we do get a lot of great feedback on that. The weird thing is, like, sometimes people will come to me in the community and say, my student doesn't go there anymore, but I still watch the announcements. It's really disturbing. But so between that and, you know, we try to get out an update, a full update, out to people at least once every 10 days or so. I don't hold myself to a hard calendar on that, but when things are coming up. So we have open house coming up on Thursday. I'm looking forward to meeting some people, some folks then. But yeah, so far, flow of communication, I think, has been pretty positive. Yeah.
My pleasure, and appreciated the birthday shout-out. First year.
Thank you. That's great. Yeah, that's fun.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, folks.
So the open house is, is the...
This Thursday? Starts at 6 o'clock?
And also, the elementary is sending out also, in the middle school, a newsletter. And actually, there is a newsletter that went out today that actually talks a little bit more about ST Math, so that people could learn a little bit more about it also.
Before we get to the joint conference, Sam, did you want to report that gift, so I don't forget?
Yes, that's, that's all right. So we did receive a gift from Comics &amp; More, which is the comic book store down on Cottage Street in East Hampton. We were gifted a, I forget exactly how many it was, but it was, I believe it was over 100 high-quality masks for students to wear if they want to at the high school, which will be available for them to grab when they feel like they might need one. And then we also had a generous donation of some unexpired COVID rapid tests that students can also take, and they can bring them home if they want to. And this was a small donation, but these are, you know, as, as you all know, the COVID rates do continue to go up, and it's going to be around for a while. So for students at the high school who are looking for masks or tests, they are available, I believe, through the nurse's office, a small amount. And, and in general, if you guys are looking for free masks and tests, they are, the comic book store is giving them away to folks who, who want them. So that's available as a community resource, too, and we really appreciate it. It's been hard to source those things since the pandemic funding dried up, so...
We going to motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Host, extensions, thank you very much to Comics &amp; More. Another hotspot that my first year really enjoyed.
Yeah, there you go.
The owner of Comics &amp; More, I'll just say this, has always been incredibly supportive of the schools and of public community safety. So just, I'm not at all surprised to hear that that gift was donated, but it's such a kind thing to do.
Bear in mind is we look at the holidays and you consider your options for holiday shopping. That's right. Is that, that might be illegal. Don't...
You know, I wasn't going to say it.
It didn't, it didn't happen. Nothing was...
It came from a good place.
Supes, I'm not going to... So we want to talk about the joint conference?
So every year, MASC, Mass Association of School Committees, and MAS, Mass Association of School Superintendents have a joint conference at the Cape. This year, it's November 6th to 9th. So myself and CM Hunter and Laura Scott will be attending that conference. It is a lot of information about innovative practices, but there also are opportunities for school committees to meet other school committees and have conversation and to vote on some items that MASC needs to have voted. So that again is November 6th to the 9th.
Great. And we will report back with what we experienced when we're there.
And don't come back with COVID?
It was pneumonia that I came back with, so I will do my best to avoid that this time.
That's right. So, great. Looking forward to it.
We had the election that week. It was the election and then that, and then I had COVID.
Stop it, Comics &amp; More.
Yes, exactly. I'll just mask up the whole time.
We'll be all set. Business update, I think we're being joined virtually by business manager Nick Burnier. Nick, are you ready? Good evening.
Hello. Can everyone hear me?
Oh, we can hear you beautifully. Go ahead.
Great. So I don't have a ton on the business report this month, as we, you know, just met two weeks ago. I did want to inform the committee that we're in the process of upgrading our dishwasher in the East Hampton High School kitchen. The current one just can't handle the amount of, you know, dishes it has to wash efficiently. So we're looking at one of those like conveyor belt style models. I've obtained quotes from three vendors. I'm just waiting for DESI to approve the purchase, because they have to approve everything over $5,000. The estimated cost is around $64,000 and will be funded with the cafeteria revolving account. You've heard me say many times during budget season that that account is healthy, and, you know, we've actually gotten memos from DESI about, you know, how you can spend it. So we, we thought that upgrading, you know, some kitchen equipment would be something appropriate to do. So I'm just waiting for DESI to give the okay. They asked me for the quotes, as well as our most current balance sheet, which they have, so just waiting to hear back from them. The estimated timeline for that would be probably during the December break, just because, I mean, you can't do that when there's students there. It's going to take a couple of days to do. They have to move a little bit of wiring and, you know, take the old dishwasher out and everything like that. That would just shut down operations. So probably during the December break would be the timeline for that. My end-of-the-year report really is my focus in September. Still working on it. I've got most of the info I need at this point. Now I'm just doing the calculations and entering the data, which, you know, does take the bulk of the month, but we're on a good pace, so not worried about that. I don't have the final summer food service program numbers. I mentioned that last time we met. I did email our food service director and said, can you put a rush delivery on that, please? But I should be able to report that at our first October meeting with no problem. And then last, the personnel report for August, you'll see it's much longer than the usual ones, just because all of the new hires for the new school year are listed. We hired over, well, almost 30 new staff members over the summer, you know, which was, was very good. I was able to meet several of them at the new teacher orientation day, August 23rd, which I do enjoy going to that. It's, you know, I like to see the, the new staff, and, you know, I think it's important that they meet some central office folks as well, because, you know, sometimes we're like, you know, people behind the curtain, you know, wrapped the scene all the time, but it's important that people know who we are. During August, we did have six separations in the district as well, a couple of which were, we're still trying to fill. We did have two transfers. We had a former paraeducator step into a special ed teacher role, as well as another former paraeducator step into a health wellness teacher role at the high school. Currently, in terms of vacancies, we've got two special education teachers at Mountain View, a special education coordinator at Mountain View, whose job would be to run team meetings and write IEPs and related work such as that. I've got two paraeducators at Mountain View, a speech pathologist at Mountain View, still have a vacant lunch supervisor that we've been trying to fill since last year. I don't believe they've been able to find one yet. And then lastly, an IT computer technician. However, I believe interviews for that will take place next week, so that will hopefully be filled soon. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one, Nick. Can you just speak briefly to clarify for the committee and the public the limitations on that, the school lunch revolving account and what we are allowed to spend that money on and not?
I can spend it on basically expenditures that go back into the program.
Right.
I can buy kitchen equipment with it. We can, you know, use funds to try to source more locally-produced or grown food. You know, we pay our food service vendor through that account, you know, our contract with the food service management company. You know, really anything related to the food service program. I could get cafeteria tables or chairs, should we, you know, need them. Anything like that. You know, anything not related to food and service, I can't, you know, I can't use those funds for that.
Just want to clarify that while we have the funds to buy the dishwasher, it's not like we're not hiring staff because we're buying a dishwasher. Anybody else have questions about the finance or personnel points? No?
No, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to school committee discussion, the policy subcommittee update. Sam, do you have any updates?
We do not have an update.
Do you have a meeting scheduled?
We, I'm trying to schedule a meeting, but then I forgot who was on the committee because we moved Linda...
We did just have a change. We will announce again, because I don't think we had a recording at our last meeting, although we have minutes, but we have had a little shift in the committee. So Eric Gayat will be joining Policy, and Linda Markey will be joining Finance.
So I just have to check in with Eric after this meeting.
Okay.
Date that we're hoping for.
Finance, do we have a secondary update?
No update and no meeting scheduled. We will meet in October, November, after the DESI end of the year report stuff.
Exactly. Wonderful. CEO?
Have not, have not met. We'll be meeting at the end of September.
Next meeting, end of September. And then the superintendent search update, we do have some big updates there in September. So our posting for our permanent superintendent, or Inez, we know, is serving as an interim, and we were told in no uncertain terms that we would not be able to get a waiver for an additional candidate. So the search is beginning in earnest. The job posting went live late last week, early this week.
It's on the website?
It is on the website for those interested in applying for the position. Simultaneous to that, we have the kickoff for the superintendent search committee. That is also a brief online application that is on the district website. We will later this week be sending a link to that to make it even easier. We're going to send it to all staff, high school students, and all the families that we have access to email addresses. Just a reminder for the public that that committee is going to be a 10-person volunteer committee. The dates basically run through the end of... The dates basically run through the end of October and early November. The specific commitment dates are listed right on the application. And there will be three parent volunteers, one from each school level, so the elementary, middle, and high school, and the same for three volunteer staff members, one each from the elementary, middle, and high school levels, with preference for each of those groups of three for at least one to have had either a student with an IEP, or in the staff case to be an instructor working with students on an IEP. And the last would be a student volunteer that we, would be a student from East Hampton High School, current student, and then three members of our administration, Nick Burnier, who is our business manager, also at Tegany Lively, our special ed coordinator, and Emily Russo, who is an expert in human resources and works, works with us for the city. So those applications are due by the end of business on Friday, October 4th. Our next school committee meeting is October 8th, where we will be reviewing those applications and making a selection and voting. So we should have that committee in place by the end of our next meeting on October 8th. Anybody have questions about?
I just have a question about the October 8th meeting.
Yes.
Are, we're not, are we just, that meeting is, is open to the public. Are we discussing the names in public?
Unclear.
Unclear.
I have a note in to our attorney about how best to handle that. All I can tell you at this point is it will begin about 6:00 PM on October 8th.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah. Any other questions?
So that is of importance in your consideration of applying?
Yeah.
Then feel free to reach out to us, do you?
Well, if you are named to the committee, that's going to be public.
Yeah.
So true. But maybe you don't, it seems patently obvious.
It's true. Would there be like deliberations on, you know, what that would look like? But we'll find out through the attorney.
I mean, first of all, there is the assumption that you have more applicants than you do slots to fill.
Great point. Trust.
It's a good assumption to make.
Let's hope.
I would love an adequate, well-rounded team. I ask for nothing more than that. So we shall see.
A quick question I had is on that 10-8, was when we were going to do the MCAS update. Do you want us to postpone that till another date? It's about 20 minutes?
I think we can do it. We'll just do it toward the end of the meeting.
Okay.
We'll try to get that, try to get the search committee done first, because I think they might even want us to do it as a public hearing. I'm waiting to get some direction and rest on that. I just don't want to keep putting things up, because I'm working to get these meetings later in the month.
We're all big.
Okay, so that is it for the superintendent search update. We're moving on to action items. Eric, don't forget. Okay. So go ahead, Megan.
Okay.
All right. Take your time.
Let's see. I have a motion to approve.
Starting to sneeze. Look at the lights.
I don't know if it's going to happen or not. We'll see. I'll try to get through this. This is really going to watch, yeah. A motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 8/22/2024 in the amount of $221,817.2.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Eric, thank you. Next.
A motion to approve the school payroll dated 8/22/2024 in the amount of $389,668.94.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Thank you, Eric.
A motion to approve the school committee work session minutes of July 9th, 2024.
Second?
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? You don't have to, those are just, those are minutes, just the first two items.
That's true. Sorry about that.
That's, you're, you're perfect, Eric.
It's getting a bit.
Right.
Okay. Motion to approve the school committee regular session minutes of August 27th, 2024, with the stipulation to withhold executive session minutes until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the chair.
Second?
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Motion to approve the executive session minutes of September 3rd, 2024, with the stipulation to withhold these minutes until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the chair.
Second?
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Okay, our next meeting dates, we touched briefly, we'll be meeting next for a regular session on October 8th. During that meeting, either beginning at 6:00 or partway into that meeting, will be the selection of the superintendent search committee and also the MCAS update. So if you're interested in that information, tune in on the 8th. After that will be October 22nd, November 12th. And a slight change for December, we originally had scheduled a meeting for December 10th. We have moved that meeting to December 17th. Drumroll, please. That is the meeting where we anticipate selecting our next superintendent.
Woo! Wow! That feels very soon.
Giddy up, y'all, giddy up. Just in time for the holidays. We have also reserved a meeting date for December 18th. If the December 17th deliberations run long and people are tired and want a sleep, we have that option available to us. So December 17 slash 18, we would expect to have an announcement pending successful contract negotiations. Okay. At this point, we are going to move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, C30A S21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, we will be adjourning our meeting from that executive session, and we will see you all on October 8th.